The call. Village Board Meeting to Order, please silence all cell phones during the meeting and look for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public interference and citizens comments and I don't top this on this agenda items will not be debated or acted upon this meeting but will we refer to the proper staff committee if that is required.
Yes, God, cover both two or public works for the last few days.
Yeah, man, good time. Yep. Got a lot of compliments from the.
Seventy, seventy-four hours.
Yeah.
That's about as long as it took to put it on the ground.
Shelley, did you have? Did you want to speak at this or public?
So just depending on how the conversation goes, the G D K park equipment conversation, that's why I just circled the S, so. In case there's any questions.
Okay, I'm sorry if you didn't bring the sheet to me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consented, yeah.
Second.
A, can you discussion on item four? Key, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The post, option carries. Item five, unfinished business, consideration, discussion liquidity, sinking, fund and investment policies. Who's taking the lead on this? Are you God?
Well, all right. Uh, the reality is that since our last meeting between holidays and bad weather, we haven't had a chance to really get to it. But Lauren has done a spectacular job of identifying where we are with this balance sheet thing. And um, I I'm just gonna hand, I just, I spent a few minutes with my scissors redoing things. And then I get Lauren's memo and it turns out that my redoing still needs more work. We're gonna go with. Uh, you can hear. Essentially what I did was I took that light and water money out of our checking account. That's seven hundred and forty-three thousand and that reduced us to five oh four. And then the surplus between the village reserve and the general surplus should have been roughly a million nine. But as you can see from Lauren's memorandum, most of that is tid money, it's not surplus. And I I I know you guys are new to this business and I know you inherited a lot of stuff. But I can tell you, I would not have voted for the budget that we took through if I knew that was only a hundred thousand dollars surplus. This is, this is not your fault and we're gonna get it corrected. But you just changed the whole dynamics when you start putting correct labels on this stuff. And what you show in your memo is available for investing is a negative four hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that ain't pretty. So I don't, I don't see a lot of point in going forward with the discussion today. Well, let me just say one other thing. So remember when the utility guy came on, ailer's came in, he did our cash flow analysis and he said we didn't have enough liquidity, remember that? I wonder what had done if he knew we had seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for checking because it did that show in his fund or was that? Were we, were we just using monies that were shown in this thing as being part of our liquidity? I don't, I don't know the answer.
Question and I, when Kelsey gets back, I definitely want to double check that number. That was my least sure number was how much was in checking.
Okay, well, that that's how, that's how this all impacts it.
Right, yeah.
You go to the public service corporation that says we don't have enough liquidity, then they start dragging their feet, right? So that's how this affects it. The other, the other part that it affects is in our, our audit. They say that we have, this is as of the end of twenty twenty-two, forty-three, uh, four point three million. And now if you look at this thing, we've got three point three million. I mean, I know we didn't lose a million dollars last year, it's just that the money's in the right, not in the right bucket. And and it, yeah, I'm a little surprised the auditors didn't write it, or maybe they did, but I didn't see it anywhere saying where's the checking account for the utility company? I'm a little surprised they wouldn't ask that question. But it, this, this thing is what goes into the hopper when you start borrowing money. So having it incorrectly, ha- having it on our records correctly impacts that. It also tells us what our objectives are. So I guess I'm thinking, we don't want to go much farther with this and you and I have to. We got clearer schedules for the next couple of weeks and by February, we should be able to have something in front of you that's tangible that we're not duking out about. Unless somebody else wanted to ask some other questions.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for speaking this out.
It's difficult when you inherit stuff. I mean, it's really pushing uphill when you have to do that. But I think this is one of those things that we get a chance to make sure we're all on the same page, we're making budgetary decisions and we're investing in, and go down through the list. Okay, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you, God. Item six, new business consideration, but resolution twenty-four dash one, reserve fund policy and debt policy, like Dean.
Yep, so this is an annual resolution we pass. We have two kind of policies. You're familiar, I imagine, with both of these, but just for a refresher. So we have our reserve fund policy where we look at ten percent of our general fund operating for emergency reserve and then a fifteen percent of general fund operating for a working capital reserve. So if you add those together, it's four hundred and fifty-five thousand eight twenty-eight. So this resolution is just affirming that that we're, that we are going to hold those with the investment in the CDs. We will have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in those three CDs that we discussed at the last meeting and will hold an additional five thousand eight twenty-eight in our Lake Bridge account for the reserve.
Where does all this come from, Lauren?
This is an annual policy.
Yeah, my concern is, is this in conflict with our reserves, with our liquidity policy? Is it, does it fit with them?
Well.
I I understand with the whereas part, but I don't understand is the, is the, these reserve when, you know, those don't show up in here either.
Well, the, the reserve does. The village reserve here, that's that account that we hold that money in.
Yeah, but this, these two together don't equal it.
Right, we have, this isn't updated. Once, each year when we pass this, we calculate how much we should have, we move the money over to make sure we're hitting that mark.
Okay, so, so let's go back to my question.
Yeah.
What's the difference between this and liquidity? Because in your memo, you start talking about ninety days.
Right.
And maybe this, this is the companion to the ninety days, rather than six months plus this.
Right, yeah, I think this can be counted in liquidity.
Do you want to pause on that? Do you have to do this right now?
The resolution?
Yeah. I don't mind coming back and redoing it if it turns out we did it wrong today. I don't mind, you know, the thought that says we have to be perfect about this.
Right, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's wrong. It's the, it's the same thing we pass every year, but if we want to update it to.
Yeah, that's, that's the right statement, yeah. So let's pass it now and we'll update it when we, once we've done the list.
Know what we want, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question on it before we update it. The maximum here is twenty years for acquisition of land, new building. How does the forty-year loan for the library, new construction and new library fit in this?
That's not village debt. Oddly enough, it doesn't count towards any of our debt limits. It goes through the, what, what's, what's our, our community development authority?
That is only, that's for library. So this is.
No, no, he, she's talking, he's talking about the Department of Bank Loan.
Right, the USDA loan.
Right.
But, sorry, so we're talking about two different things. So the, you're talking about, we, we've looked at getting a USDA loan for the library, which has to go through CDA and allows you to get around general obligation requirements of the twenty years.
Right.
Um, differently, we're doing a USDA loan for the water reservoir.
Right, isn't that also go through CDA?
It does not.
Really?
Correct, yeah, but it's.
Really?
A utility loan, so I don't know if there's.
Okay, there's a different category.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So they're both not involved with this.
Right, it's a good question, Larry, yeah, yeah, it's kind of its own category.
All right, that was all my only question.
Um, so yeah, I guess the only other thing to add is, we also have a debt policy that states that. So like, there's, there's kind of two policies. There is the five percent equalized value policy for debt. And then we add an additional, which is you only want to do seventy-five percent of that five percent. So I included those numbers there, we are well within those limits. The statutory debt limit is fifteen million and we're at seven point seven million.
So it looks like we should move it. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh one.
I'll, I'll second, I'll put a sentence in there that we're gonna make sure this correlates with our investment thing, however that works out.
Lauren, did you want to comment on the three CDs at this point?
Oh, yeah.
It's been a little empty.
Um, so after the board decided we would invest four hundred and fifty thousand in CDs, I reached out to our three local banks to get this for that. Those came back a couple of weeks ago. And so we are, we have a six-month CD with Lake Ridge Bank and a twelve and eighteen-month CD with Bank of New Polaris.
Have we to return on that?
Um, the, gosh, I didn't write that down.
Over five?
Yes. Yeah, I will send that out. I apologize, I didn't know, I didn't write that down.
Over five.
So that was just an update, so please kind of put that in there.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor say aye. Pose, and carries. Uh, enemy, discussion consideration, resolution twenty-four dash zero two, device schedule fees for use of nuclear swimming pool, page twenty.
So the village board approved the entire schedule of fees for pools to be increased by fifteen percent. That was back when we were doing budget. Megan was putting together the recreation programming and asked that we update the special group rates to be whole dollars, just to make things easier at the pool and not have to deal with change. So that's the reason we're updating it. They were at five fifty and, or they were at, yeah, five fifty and seven fifty and now we're at four, changing it to six. So just adding a fifty cent.
I've moved to.
Well, that's reasonable.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four oh two.
I'm second. I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Here we go, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. NLC, consideration, discussion, tree, tree, tree pruning and removal bid award, that's on page twenty-one.
All right, so the twenty twenty-four budget includes twenty-four thousand set aside for street tree pruning and removal. We put out a request for bids for sixty-three trees to be pruned, three tree removals and eight stumps to be ground. Uh, we received three bids, the lowest bid coming in at twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-five with tree and landscaping care. So the tree board met and recommended Foley. Um, we've reached out to Foley to actually reduce the scope down a little bit. We actually want them to bring it down to twenty-two thousand. So that frees up an additional two thousand, we could do some unanticipated pruning throughout the year. Um, so at this time, we'd recommend selecting Foley Tree and Landscape Care.
Have they done trees before in a month?
Okay, yeah.
I've been here multiple years, haven't you?
They've been our contractor actually, this is the last three years.
Okay.
They do a really good job. So are they definitely going to be going down to the twenty-two thousand or is this just like a request that we're doing?
Yeah, we'll work with them on removing things from the scope and I think Paul and Foley have been going back and forth on reducing that scope, so.
So it's just we're going to be doing less work than what is.
Take things out, yeah.
I move to approve, approve bowling tree and landscape care for the, in the village. That you specify.
Did you say it in my?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Nothing from public works and safety, Peggy? Hey, Chuck, anything from Parks and Rec?
Um, just the.
What's coming up?
Uh. Item A, the tape, uh, candy cane, our inclusive playground vendor selection, we bet. At our normal meeting and selected, as, as you see here, selected a a vendor and I just want to make sure the board. We approve the vendor, I felt the board should, should approve this also. It's not a bid. Thing, so. I don't, hopefully you've read.
A picture of their layout is on page forty. It kind of looks like the Little Sugar River going through their surface. We thought they were much more, uh, creative and looking towards the autistic side because they didn't propose a red, bright red, which is not a good color for, we found out for autistic people.
Really?
Yeah, so, so they just looked like they were more on top of it. And I don't know, Shelley wanted to.
So the only other comment I would say is that the person also who has been assisting us from CRS is local, she lives in the village. And so she's gone above and beyond to try to be responsive and include whatever, you know, we could. She lives near the park, her grandchildren, when they visit, play at the park, so she's invested in it as well. Um, you know, I think that that carried a little bit away, but overall it was that they tried to be more thoughtful in their design and include things. I will say that the only hesitation that I have with them is this small recent email correspondence Lauren that we had in that, you know, she's, they seem less flexible about, you know, these are the requirements that you must have when you talk about positioning of the playground equipment, where the other vendors said, oh, sure, we can do that. And it kind of makes me wonder, you know, can they really, like, if she's right and they're wrong and they're just telling us what we want to hear now and we will change it after the fact to say you can't have two handicap accessible swings right next to each other, um, which is what CRS has told us. So anyway, um, you know, for what that's worth, I think that that was the only other real comment that I had. I think both reliable, well-respected vendors and, uh, you know, they both go for good roots, but I think we tend to tell the end of CRS.
But you picked an option, you have to pick the even correct at this point.
Well, so I think, you know, it will largely depend on, we have this other grant that we're also applying for, that if we were to get that, you know, we would include the design that has the tire swing on it, but that design is not within our budget unless we get those additional rate dollars. Um, so it would be the sign that they have included in your packet, I don't know exactly what they give you for this, uh, but the sign that's included in the packet that assumption doesn't have the tire swing to it.
So what happens to the red? If the red is not going to be used for with coloring?
No, so the red is the recreation design. If you look at the other design, it's got the green sort of thing with blue, it's two colors, so.
Oh, I see it, yeah, yeah.
So it has some red, but not nearly as much.
The red was in the park equipment itself.
Yeah.
Right, which we want a candy cane theme, um, but the surfacing is where the difference is. The recommended red throw up and I think it's too much.
The only thing I thought, I mean, I, maybe it's addressed with your, uh, expert designer is when you have children who are handicapped and then you also have children of normal abilities. I was looking at option one and I thought option one would be a better choice because they were separated more instead of clustered together where you would get all these people and autistic children not necessarily like being around. They're hesitant and then those with wheelchairs and I just thought it would be too congested in the one designs that had, I mean, for normal kids, it would be cool, they have all those things going on, but I, I thought maybe option one, which was a little more separated, um, still having cool things in there, um, might be better for children who don't necessarily want to play in crowds. So I don't know if that's been addressed at all.
So to be honest, I think we looked at it the opposite of that. Oh, we didn't want there to be segregation between children with special needs and children without special needs. We wanted them to all be able to come together to play. Um, and to not say this section, so some of the parks that we looked at, like if you look in Pittsburgh at McKean Arms, they have two entirely separate playgrounds, one that is only for children, that, that is designed specifically for children with special needs. And then a quarter of a mile away is the park that the, the children who don't have special needs play at because it's all wood chips, there's no important place surfacing, and so we didn't want to create that kind of environment.
Well, that's why we started with, uh, inclusive playground, it's been inclusive from start.
Right.
Would be inclusive, meaning.
Well, the only.
Just inclusive, meaning.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because my, where my grandchildren live, they have an exclusive park there.
Sure.
And the one, uh, section is very long with a lot of things in there and it's so congested when you have everybody in there that I thought not separating, but just chunking it off so that you can get out and off in the activity, but there's one spot on that, on that playground area where the kids just, you know, they're moving around each other to get to the other ends and it, it's not that anybody's afraid or anything, it's just that it, it's a core design because there's, it's like traffic that's congested. So, so I was looking at something that was a little more open so that you can get a wheelchair, an autistic child, a normal child moving along, you know, rather than having points of congestion. So I thought option one provided they had a little more on.
That was a, that was a big point of our discussion at Parks Meeting. And in fact, I think I was the one that probably brought it up and we felt that, um, we would, we would work this out as we go along.
Yeah.
Parents and whatever super other supervision is there would, would help to, uh, work this out so there wasn't just this congestion where everybody wants.
So are these the, the designs that are in stone or are?
No.
No, so these are just examples.
At this point, we're selecting a vendor, so we gave them a budget and said, submit a proposal so we can select the vendor so we can still work through the design with them. Now, I think this is, we're probably getting pretty close to what, what we're gonna do though, because uh, one, we're gonna submit for that grant, we have to submit a design to them and that happens by the end of this month. Um, and, and two, I think, you know, for the money that we have, this is kind of what we can get. So I think we're getting close, but we certainly can continue to provide feedback. So if there are things that the board wants changed or feedback.
Well, again, I'm an expert, I just, it's just personal experience and so a lot of these are, I mean, all the designs are really cool. I just thought maybe we wouldn't want a really long, extensive one to put so many kids in there that you couldn't get a lot of movement, but like Chuck said, you already discussed.
I think the one other thing, just real quickly, is that the kids who don't, you know, have physical restrictions, there are several other access points. They don't have to use the ramps at all, in fact, they probably wouldn't. They would probably use the climbers on the sides to get to the taller equipment and taller slides that aren't accessible to the, you know, children who have physical limitations.
Well, we even talked at Parks and Rec meeting, if, if we see that one group of individuals are hogging equipment, that we, we might put up some signage saying, be respectful of others and don't, you know, something to indicate, don't just stay on a piece of equipment and not let other kids.
Right.
If we need.
Yeah.
This is new for us in practice.
Sure.
It's new for, uh, really, it's, it's new for anybody compared to this, whether you're in Madison or here, we'll have to work it out as.
Yeah.
Goes along. Right now, we just want to get, uh.
A vendor.
Get online with our, our vendor and, and, uh, our fundraisers or know they're under the gun to get things going, grants and so on. So, uh, nothing is totally written in stone at this point. And like, it's, it's not a bid that we have to strictly adhere to.
So all we're looking for is a motion to select the vendor tonight.
So if that's what you want to do.
Well, that's what Lauren would like.
Roger, under village responsibilities, it says we have to do install.
Correct, we're gonna be doing a community build.
Do what?
A community build. So volunteers would actually install the equipment with the vendor supervising. So it's a way to save money, um, it's done.
It's a big saving.
Can we all have, I saw this.
So it's other organizations, Bob, it's not just, you know, like, it's not like we're gonna ask the people in this room, right? So we talked to the F B A of Lonai, we talked to the fire department, um.
Just to raise the, the annoying question of liability.
Not.
We've done it before.
We've done it before.
And that's common around this time.
Exactly.
That's how you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Valtel too, I think Valtel was when they put the part over there.
Yeah, I want to say that's at least a lot of twenty thousand dollar savings.
I'm not complaining about saying, because I was worried about expertise and something happens and you wish you hadn't kind of thing.
Well, you just. When they put it together, both what happens is that inspector, the guy that watches them, once it's all put together, he's a certified.
Oh, okay.
Inspector, he'll go everything, do it, and then he approves it.
Good.
I, I talked to Dane Tony guy about this and he says, yes, that's a better way to save money, is have these groups come in and build it for you. But he says, once they're done, their inspector will go through the whole thing to check it and then it'll be okay.
Okay.
Well, we need a motion. Um.
Move selection of, said vendor, second.
Just to be clear, CRS.
CRS. Yeah, commercial recreation specialists, yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Uh, there's nothing from. Chelsea wanted me to say that there will be most spring. Primary this year, thank you. That's all she wanted me to tell the board, so.
Something about. Uh.
I think there's somebody interested in giving me his spot personally. He, he's the same person that Brandon talked to me about.
Okay.
So, so we may have somebody want to run us a right into, shut spot. Okay. Going on to item eleven, announcement, village board will adjourn in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, one E, delivering or negotiating investment by public funds for contracting, conducting other specific public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session and may reconvene into open session to state statute nineteen ninety. require a closed session and may reconvene into open session to state statute nineteen ninety five. Water reservoir land purchase. Need a motion and then we will call.
I'm going to go in close.
Second.
Okay.
Shelley, did you get Lauren's email?
Yeah, on the thirty.
Yeah.
I guess we need to grab her depth period if you want for availability for that day. If she's available, then we're good to go.
Okay.
Perfect. So as soon as I hear from her, I'm assuming tomorrow. I'm with you, it's new.
Thank you.
Roger.
Yes.
Chuck.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Peggy. Scott.
We're a few sessions on.